What's up in the meeting? We can all stand for Pledge of Legits led by Mr. Fabrizi.
All right. Pledge of Legits to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hearing the citizens, does anybody would like to be heard? Give three minutes.
Go ahead, Art.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity, esteemed school board, staff, members. I've come to you today, as I have all over the city and really all over the county, to speak on behalf of the disadvantaged, disenfranchised, and the marginalized of our community. Because who else is going to speak up for them? And who else, besides yourselves, are going to make decisions in their favor? Just for the people that are forgotten, the people that are disenfranchised and really are disadvantaged by the system. I have a number of items to speak to you today. First of all, you're going to be considering some LERTA adjustments. I know the city, the mayor, I spoke to the mayor, spoke to the city council, spoken to a lot of different groups. And you should think hard and long about giving taxpayer money away when there's so much that's necessary. But I will tell you that we do need development in the city. And so there is a kind of a yin and yang that's necessary there. Erie County Coalition and Erie County United has come up with some ideas or enhancements that'll increase employment, increase wages, and I want you to strongly consider those. They're very important. Next thing is community benefit agreements. I've talked about community benefit agreements. Recently, a county council has approved a notice to the General Assembly of the State of Pennsylvania to include community benefit agreements whenever they give state funds out, or any funds for that matter. And I want you to consider heavy because, again, we need fair wages, we need just employment, we need employment for all, not just for some in the city. And it's important that we consider this. And I don't know if you've heard of it before, but we've been tooting this horn now for several years. And community benefit agreements are important. When you do development, it's a agreement between the developer, a county, or a governmental agency, and a group like Erie County Coalition. So I want to let you know that that's top of my mind. There are going to be some other speakers here. I know it's top of their mind. But I thank you for your attention to that.
Thank you. Can we just get you to sign the paper?
Absolutely.
You want to speak? Someone else? We'll let her and him, we'll go with you, Gary. Okay?
So, hi. In the past decade or so, I've had kids in the Erie public school system, and I may have one more going to Grover Cleveland next year. And when my kids were at Strong Vincent about five, six years ago, from that point on until now, my son was at Emerson-Gribley last year before it closed, but they didn't have any school books, like textbooks, in their classrooms. I mean, they had them in the classrooms, but they were not able to take them home with them. So, I mean, we were all aware of the budget deficit when it comes to the school district. So to expand on Art's point, you know, I've sent you all, everyone, every member, every director, I've sent you all our proposed changes to LERTA. But, I mean, to really emphasize what Art's saying is that we want to see development happen in Erie, but we do not want to see the city just given away to developers without asking for anything in return. And when I say anything, we have a lot of poor people in this city struggling, we have a lot of homeless kids in the school district, we have a lot of renters in the school district. These people need living wage jobs, they need, we need local hire, we need things to come out of the development that benefits residents so people can start owning their own homes, building the property tax base here so we can have funding so our kids, my kids, can have books to take home so they can, you know, do their homework and actually have a reference point to do it from. So I'm just pleading to you all, I've sent you all documents months ago, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to look at them, but we've made some proposed changes to LERTA, we've offered them to the mayor, you guys can take a look at it, it's sitting in your email. But we just please ask that we do not give away anything else in the city without the residents getting something in return. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. I'm here to address you also about the move to develop a local LERTA agreement. I believe that before you vote on such a thing, you should call for a public hearing and get the citizens' input and on it. I believe that as far as the school district is concerned, a community benefit agreement or a CBA ought to be attached to it. I believe that if anybody can't afford to give away money, taxes, rebate, whatever you want to call it, incentive, to people who can afford to pay it, the school district is not the one. I don't want to sacrifice 10 years of my grandkids' education in that by disinvesting in the school district. We can't afford it. We, I don't care who comes with it, we can't afford it. And if they're, if they, if you agree to do it, attach something to it. We can't afford to give away money we don't have. We need to get, we need to get money. We need someone to give us something. A community benefit agreement is flexible funding. You can do things like set a goal, we want to hire 50 black teachers in five years. Where are you going to get the money from? It's still not enough. You have over 800 teachers, you have nine black teachers, 60% of the kids are kids of color. This is a 50-year problem we've been dealing with in Erie. It'll only take an ambitious goal to set out there and shoot for it. We don't have the money within our current funding structure to do that, but a community benefit agreement could. And that you create a pot that people can put, teachers are tired of reaching into their own pocket to fund things that we can't fund, whether it's paper, pencils, or, you know, or something of that sort. A community benefit agreement will take care of that. A week ago, the stats came out that poverty is up. It's not down, it's going up. The 24/7 Wall Street report saying this is the worst city in America for blacks or African-Americans to live. And that education is where we're going to address that. People need job, and they need learning. And that we can't afford to just give away money for people who can afford to pay. And so, like I said, there are more computers, more books, there are a ton of things that we could bring to the district and that we can't afford out of the current system that we have of funding things. But as Art was saying, why should the developer walk away with all the profit? Why should he walk away with all the investment? They close streets, they close sidewalks, they inconvenience us, and that they slow down traffic, they detour us in different directions, they ask for variances, they ask for zoning changes, we get nothing in return for it. Please don't sacrifice our kids for 10 years. 10 years. Which one of you would sacrifice your kid for 10 years? For 10 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Veronica Rexford, and I'm a Mill Creek resident, and I work in the city. I work at the Quality Life Learning Center. I am on the Citizens Advisory Board to the Mill Creek School Board. I've also studied and worked in public relations. I can tell you they are doing it wrong in Mill Creek. You've seen the things about that and all that, you know, kind of a laughing stock? You don't want to be in that place. Allowing a 10-year LERTA to slide by without insisting on something in return is a potential public relations disaster for the school board, and I just wanted to add that aspect to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? We're going to move on to our first subject, which will be website refresh. Ms. Daria Devlin.
Thank you, Mr. Petringer. I'm going to speak briefly this evening because I know we have a long agenda, but I just wanted to give the board an update on where we are. We had talked this year about updating our website. We definitely feel like this is needed due to the fact that the website we're currently using, if any of you ever access it from your phones, you'll notice that our website right now does not have responsive design. That means it's not mobile-ready, it's very difficult to use on a cellphone. And we also feel that to engage with our families better, to reach the people we need to reach, we need to update and refresh where we are. So we began this study, I've been working with Mr. Vitale, and Rick, if you want to pop in with anything here, please do, to look at what we can do with our current platform, this is SchoolWires that we use right now, what we can do to update and refresh that. So they gave us some options, and if, Dawn, if you wouldn't mind just clicking on this one here. This is the one that we have kind of unofficially chosen, I'd like to get your feedback. I've kind of done an informal survey with some of our administrators here to see what they think. Some things that I want to point out to you about this new potential design is really the nice ability for us to showcase our pictures. This actually can be used as a streaming video, so when people go to our website, a video can begin to stream, which I really like that feature as well. It has a lot of really nice navigation across the front, and these apps at the bottom, these icons here, that would allow families to quickly get to where they need to go on our website. We really want to start using this website as our portal for all communications with families, and we think that this look and these features will allow us to do that. One other aspect that the responsive design will allow is the addition of an app. So we talked about that, Mr. Petringer, with the tip line and some of the needs we felt we had with families. This type of website will give us the ability to develop an app that all of our stakeholders can download on their mobile devices and easily access a lot of the information that we need them to access. So I put on your desk this evening a budget proposal. Obviously, this, there will be a cost associated with that. It looks like this, it's kind of a chart. This is the proposal that we've been given from SchoolWires, basically to let you know this year we spent about $31,000 on SchoolWires, that's for hosting and software. Next year, the cost for this complete refresh, the app integration and development, would be $47,000. So it would be a $17,000 increase over what we spent this year. But that, many of that, much of that would be one-time costs. Next year, the price would go down to $37,000, which was more in line with where we are now. A lot of that has to do, again, with the switch-over from this, from our old sync to this, and also the use of an app. So just wanted to give you a brief overview with that. We will be putting forward a contract from the company when we get that, but wanted to make sure, see if there were any questions this evening, or anything else I can tell you about this project as we move forward.
Anybody have any questions? Karen?
Just the one question I would have, is, is there, the reason why this company is just because that's who we're utilizing now? Or are we, have we checked into other companies?
We have not, simply because we have a longstanding relationship with SchoolWires, and they do host most school websites that we've seen. Honestly, this was the platform we were using when I came on board, it's the one that hosts a lot of our curriculum as well. But it's a good suggestion, we could certainly go out and see what else might be out there. I just, I know that most districts are using SchoolWires.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Yes?
Yeah, no, I just want to talk about that app, the app that would allow kids that knew, that know of something going on in the school with another kid as far as suicides or, or, you know, the school shooters, or any of that kind of information, that to have a way for those kids to anonymously let us know, or let someone know what's going on, I think is very, very important, and I, I'm very glad that we're heading in that direction.
So the app that they'll develop for us will have many, many features, I mean, again, with much better ability to communicate with our families. That tip line is an important element of it, but I do want to stress, you know, as we move forward, and we hear very often our families don't have internet access, but most of them do have some sort of mobile device. So our ability to communicate with them, you know, on that, both for the concerns you're talking about and others, I think will really help our engagement with them.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And being of the discussion we had earlier, we're going to move the LERTA up to next. Mr. Pulido.
And you do have a handout on LERTA at your desk, and since there's people here that are interested in, in this, I do have some extra copies. So as we've been discussing throughout this process, we, over the next, we certainly understand the long-term benefit of LERTA, and that the last time we did have a 10-year, 100% LERTA, it really basically doubled the development in the city of Erie. But if we do enter into a straight, long-term, 10-year LERTA, we will have a negative impact in the short term. And as we've been working through our financial projections, the next five years are very important to the district. We're going to have a limited amount of dollars to invest in our buildings and our facilities. So as we start to think about how we might participate in LERTA, I just wanted to share a little bit of information and kind of give you a baseline as to where we feel that, how far the district could go without negatively impacting. And that's certainly not what we're recommending here tonight, but it's a baseline to start discussions. So if you take a look at the first page of this analysis, the top section really is an analysis of what happened the last time we had the 10-year LERTA, and then it also takes a look at what would, what has happened since 2006, 2007 to our tax collections excluding all the new developments, because that's really what, what this 10-year LERTA would do. So if you look at the second to the last column, within those, that timeframe that we had the 10-year LERTA last time, from 2007, '08 through 2012, '13, you can see that we actually saw a reduction in our revenues. And if you look at the average over that time period, it was a .4 reduction, negative .4 reduction in our collections. The last column really takes all the LERTA and all the development out of there, and over the entire timeframe, without any new, new additions, we again saw that negative .4 change in our collections. So, so based on this, and we did have PFM verify this, and they did confirm that, these numbers, actually this afternoon, for every year that we're in a 10-year LERTA, we're going to see a, that .4% reduction in our collections. And that equates to $175,000 a year. So if you look at the bottom chart, you can see here, projecting out, the first two years, we would not anticipate seeing a reduction in our collections because we're going to have some additional LERTAs coming on the tax rolls to offset. And let me back up a minute here to, the reason that we anticipate a reduction without those additions is because every single year we have businesses and residential properties coming to us and appealing their tax assessment and getting that reduced. And we're also continuing to have nonprofit entities come on the books, and all those things go to reduce our tax collections. So when we have additions moving forward, that really has historically offset that reduction. So again, when you look at it, if we go into a 10-year LERTA, we will not have any additions for the next 10 years to offset those reductions. So looking at this over that 10-year period, you can see that starting in 2020, 2021, we would anticipate a $175,000 reduction in our tax collections, and then that, that would really snowball over the next several years so that by the end of that LERTA, our tax collections would, would be reduced by a total of $1.4 million. Now, in that 10 years, we would have an increase of $1.8 million if the same type of development happened as the last time. But again, that's 10 years to wait for that. So as we've been working through our projections and working with Mr. Zogby and PFM, we've kind of developed, you know, an idea of where, if the board is interested in participating in LERTA, where we could do that without, again, negatively impacting our budget in the short term. So if you go to the next page, these are two scenarios that we came up with. And again, based, you know, based on these numbers, or my recommendation tonight is that we cannot participate in a 10-year, 100% LERTA. But, you know, these are some other options that we may be able to participate and also help spur the development that the mayor's looking for. So if you look at the top one, this is a seven-year, 50% LERTA. And you can see here we have our collections, the highlighted area again is the reduction. Assuming, again, that we have the same type of development that we did the last time we did the 10-year LERTA, if we did a 50% LERTA for seven years, you can see in that first year, we would have $938,000 in tax revenue to offset the $175,000 loss, so we would see a net increase of $763,000. But you can see as you move through the years, as that cumulative, negative effect starts to build, during 2025, 2026, we all, we actually see a small reduction in our collections. But then it's balanced out in that last year when the, when those properties become 100% taxable. So that's, that's one option that we're looking at, that we could participate in and, again, not negatively impact the district in the short term. And then the next one is a little more balanced, it's a 10-year graduated, so this is similar to something that's on the tax, on the rolls right now for LERTA. It would be 100% LERTA in year one, 90%, 80%, and so on, until it gets to a 0%. So if you see, if you look at this, the first year, somebody that, if we had, again, the same type of development as last time, we would see an increase of $187,000 in our tax revenues, which would basically just offset the loss. And you can see moving through here, it's pretty much balanced. So again, this is kind of a break-even if we were to participate. So this is the minimum, I think, as far as my recommendation, the farthest we could go as a district to participate in a LERTA. And then the last page, just to give you an example of what, what this would look like for the taxpayers, and this assumes, again, the city and the county go with a 100% 10-year LERTA. The first one is the seven-year, you can see if, on a million-dollar project, the taxpayer or developer would be paying about $8,000 a year in taxes. And then you can see in the last year, when everything comes on, the total tax bill between the city, the county, and the school district is $34,000. And the bottom one, the 10-year graduated, you can see the same example of what that would look like for, for their tax bills.
Any questions? Yes, John.
Top of page two, Brian, I'm trying to absorb this, and I'm having a slow process in my head. In the last column there, why are those two net increase in collection, or decrease in collections in parentheses?
They're decreases.
It means decrease.
Right. So increase, decrease, decrease, increase.
Right.
Can you explain why? Could you just, if you do that again?
Right. So, so again, this, this assumes $112 million in new construction across the city, and all of it coming onboard in 2020, '21. So if we, 50% of the tax on that is $939,000. If you look at the, the yellow column, we're going to, we're going to continue to have assessment appeals and exempt properties, reduce our tax rolls. So that, we're estimating that's going to be $175,000 per year. The collections from the new construction, if we did a 50% seven-year, would be 938. So the last column, we see a total net increase of $763,000. But again, as you move through these, these years, and that cumulative effect of, you know, $175,000 every single year, it really catches up to the 938,000, the 50% in 2025, '26, and 2026, '27. Then, in '27, '28, that's year eight, that, all those properties then would be 100% taxable. So again, you can see the tax doubles on those, which you can see the net benefit. So really, you know, over the long term, when you look at this, the net benefit to us for, for the LERTA is about half a million dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess looking at this, unless I'm not seeing something, unless something here that I'm not seeing, I should say, this is the best plan, that's at $495. That's, we have more money in our pocket with this than any other option.
Correct, right.
So why don't we do something other than that?
Well, it's, I, I think that's what I wanted to have a little discussion about where the board is on this. Again, we, we'd like to try to find a way to participate and, you know, potentially benefit from this. So this, this is kind of the baseline, is the farthest I think we can go. So I'd like to get a little impact, input back from the board as far as where, where they are, how, you know, if you want us, if you want, as I move forward and continue to have discussions with the mayor and the county executive, are you looking to generate some additional revenue, or are you looking to go the bare minimum to participate? And again, you know, when you look at this, this is going to be a real balancing act because right now, we effectively have a 50% LERTA in the city, and it's not generating any development. So, so again, we want to find, there's got to be a sweet spot in there where we can participate, and it will still spark that development, and hopefully generate us a little revenue. And, you know, possibly the seven-year, 50%, it may not be enough to do that, it could be, but, so.
Mr. President? Yeah. So, so like, you know, like we're talking about the next five years, though, because we're just coming off of what we're coming off of, and we're trying to do the best we can to take, so which, which of those two options suits us better in the next, in the first five years?
It's the seven-year, 50%.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I, I have a hard time ever making decisions, especially long-term, in 10 years seems like a, but for, for a decision to be made by someone who's elected for a four-year term, and you're making election, I mean, whether they're re-elected or not, you're making decisions for people or even my, you know, if I would run again, but whatever, that you're making decisions down the line when you're on a four-year term. It's always hard for me to make those decisions. So I would rather go with the seven-year situation at this point, and I just wanted to also know about the, the benefit that it may be in these, because I know that these next five years for us are very, very important, and I think, I think even people that are advocates of LERTA would certainly understand the position that we've been in and what we've been trying to do. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm very happy with the projections you've given us. Yes?
Was there any discussion of a five-year LERTA? How would that impact us as opposed to a 10-year or seven-year?
So if you, if you look at this, yeah, the seven-year, the 1.8 million would come on two years earlier.
And is my understanding that we cannot separate, it has to be city-wide, we can't exclude the Bayfront from this agreement, that something about not being able to collect the taxes? Is that what I read?
We have to agree on the boundaries, correct, but we can have different percentages.
Yes.
We can or cannot. We are permitted to operate a different LERTA program, but we are, we have to agree on boundaries with the other taxing bodies. So if our agreement with the other taxing bodies is city-wide, we can't do city-wide but the Bayfront.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Is there any earned income benefit by having, I don't, we don't, this is in tax collection for school taxes.
Right.
But community-wide, though, is there, let's just, like, there's a doctor right across the street from me that built a beautiful home, and he's still not paying taxes. You know, he's a pretty good earner, presumably, I don't know. But assuming that some of that earned income is coming back into the community as well. So I guess I'd have to see what is the net overall impact rather than just what we get. Is there, are those numbers available, or is that something that's not?
I think that would be very hard to estimate because we would have to try to determine if this LERTA program would actually attract people back into the city residential. And that's, and that's one of the things that I think we really should stay away from as far as, as the LERTA, the current LERTA actually has additional from as far as, as the LERTA, the current LERTA actually has additional tax breaks for entities that show that they have brought jobs in, but there's no, there's no way to ensure that those jobs are coming into the city of Erie. So for example, you know, Erie Insurance now, because of what they're doing, is going to get a 90% LERTA, it's going from 50 to 90% because they have shown that they're going to bring jobs into the area. But if those, those people actually live outside the city, we don't benefit at all from that. So we're actually incentivizing benefits for the, the surrounding municipalities.
Got it.
So.
So I, I really just wanna make it clear from, I guess, from my perspective, is that, I know through a lot of our discussion that we have had, and then hearing everybody tonight, that I really, I personally am not in support of the, of the school board endorsing or signing on for the LERTA because of the very fact that it will, it will take away from the schools. It absolutely will, there's no way around it. I mean, and you've laid out the numbers for us. Yes, there are ways we can, we can minimize that, especially with the 10-year projected. I know we need to stem jobs, and we need to stem the revenue, and we need to keep endorsing growth in the city. However, my, my fear is that the jobs that we are, that are coming are not self-sustaining. Families cannot live off the wages that are being built. So what we're, what we're basically endorsing is further poverty gaps, and that we're really helping the city kind of gentrify certain areas. So that is my fear for us joining in, and I just kind of wanted to make sure that that was, my position was known on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am done, but I would like a little bit of direction on how, how you would like me to proceed as we continue these discussions.
I guess, Frank, I guess, we're looking at the numbers here, but I'd like to see the outside of the numbers, what are the other societal impacts in favor of it, or not in favor of it, other than just, I mean, if, no, I'm a counting number guy, and I suppose that's from tax software that happens. Besides that, why would we, or why would we not? I guess I'm not, I'm not very right now to support one way or the other, because I have enough of the soft issues, then we can, I don't have the information, I guess. Tim, is that something that you're, you'd be able to help with that one? You're a soft counting guy.
I'm gonna let that one slide.
Let me, let me, I can start, I can speak to the benefits, because there are benefits in the long-term. If, and I should have included this in this packet, but if you take a look at all the development in the city from 2004 through 2018, it's, it's added about $216 million to the tax rolls. $112 million of that development happened during the last 10-year of LERTA, and that's what we're assuming will happen again. So, so really, the last time there's a 10-year LERTA, the, the amount of development in the city doubled, meaning that, you know, that, that would increase our revenues. But again, we're, you know, under the 10-year LERTA, we're, we're postponing and losing in the short term to have a long-term gain 10 years out. So that's, that's why, you know, when we look at these proposals, if we, if we do nothing, and it, and ends up the city and the county go, then it's basically a 50% LERTA in the city. And that is not gonna be enough to spark additional development in the city, because that's the LERTA that's currently in, in effect with all the, the entities participating. So again, if we, if we're able to find a way to, to assist and participate here that does spark the development, but really doesn't negatively impact the school district in the city, then, then I think that that, that might be something that we would wanna consider. And that's, again, that's, I think that's that last, second-to-last page, what I'm trying to do here is quantify, you know, if we are able to participate, say, for example, if we do a 50% LERTA, even if it's five years, that means that the tax rate in the city for new development is effectively 25%, which maybe that'll be enough to do that. So that, that's the benefits I.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I could respond to the question, I guess we'll call it Mr. Spiger. With respect to that, I mean, while I don't have any data or anything analytical I can provide you regarding the societal benefits of the LERTA at this time, the question I have for Mr. Palito that may help with your question, the cumulative impact of the assessment reductions, the yellow column that you provide throughout your spreadsheet, where you're showing where, that there's, you know, in year one, which is 2020, 2021, there's $175,224 reduction in the assessment. The next year, I assume that's just basically a doubling of that, that figure, to get to the 349. And then you add another 175 to that to get to the 523. Is that a number, that reduction in the assessment, is that going to occur whether there's a LERTA or not?
Yes.
So that's what you're facing right now, merely by virtue of Erie County's, the city of Erie's property stock reducing in value, whether there's a LERTA or not. So I think what Mr. Palito is asking, or is stating, is that the current LERTA at 50% is not producing a development impact that offsets that reduction. So we're seeing a repeated negative figure that is coming into our coffers as a result of that?
It barely offsets it.
Barely offsets it.
Basically, every, every time we have something come on the tax rolls because of new additions, we have something come off. And so when you look at our revenues over the last five to 10 years in real estate tax, they're basically level, and I think Dave, we were talking today, they're actually projecting a small decrease moving forward, right?
So.
Status quo, yes.
So then your, your, your analysis then is correct to say, is that if we do nothing, we're going to see a continued status quo in terms of the assessment, the assessment value decrease in the city of Erie? And so your option that you're being, that you're proposing, just to make sure everybody understands, the seven-year 50% LERTA is, you, based on the projections from PFM, if there's an additional 50% LERTA from the school district, in addition to the city and the county offering 100% LERTA, you're projecting that status quo offset from going to about zero to year one being a $763,650 increase to the positive in collections to the school district?
Yes, assuming that we have the same type of development that we did the last time we had the 10-year.
Okay. So I don't have any real data, but I think we presented it in that way, it may answer some of the questions you might have.
Charles, would you mind giving us your opinion on this? Being our financial administrator, and what you, what you think on the LERTA itself?
Well, I'd really like to buttress Attorney Walker's point that he made, and these, and not to sort of steal the thunder from, or briefing when we're ready, but at least the preliminary projections that have been provided by PFM shows in our baseline, so from 2018 to 2023, we're looking at somewhere around 1.74 million decline in real estate tax revenues for the district over that six-year projection period. It's about a nearly 4% decrease. So the reality for this board is that absent any other changes in policy, no tax increases, just current policy staying as is, for the next six years, if you do nothing, you're going to lose 1.74 million. So that, that is the reality. I think you all have to make the judgment as to whether participating in this program in any fashion is something that, that you wanna do, certainly, I think, reacting to what is probably in near certainty a loss of real estate revenue and trying to combat that. You're not going to, you're not gonna make up that loss simply by looking, for instance, at earned income taxes, right? More job creation, people paying, paying in. Our projections there, we're only looking at probably a $400,000 gain or so over that same six-year period. So still, on a net basis, you're about 1.1 million debt.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, you don't have real direction yet. I think it's something we have to.
Continue to discuss.
To discuss.
Yeah. Maybe if I, I phrase it this way, I think if you look at the, the 10-year graduated schedule here, that, that's pretty much a break even for the school district. So that, that's the farthest we could go, again, and not, not harm the district. And it also, it will have the best chance of yielding the development that the mayor is looking at, because it's closest to a 10-year 0% as it was last time. So that, that's one option, but, and then if you look at the 70 or 50%, you can see, again, if it, if it does spark that type of development, then that, that, in addition to sparking the development, also gives us some revenue upfront when we need it. So I guess maybe if I ask it this way, is, we're, you know, are you leaning more towards doing, going as far as we can without hurting the district, or would you like us to continue to have discussions about what we could do to, to participate, but generate some additional revenue or benefits for the district?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I guess, hearing this, I guess I'm in favor of 70 or 50%, just because we're just starting to get a little bit of money, and we have to keep on getting a little bit of money, a little bit of money, a little bit of money keeps on adding up. You know, this man wouldn't be here if we had, you know, coffers as full of money, you know, so, and I think that the community understands our woes for the last five, eight years, or it's been, I don't know, eight years, gotta be at least. And I think people understand that we're not full bore, giving everybody everything. You know, I think that we're giving up something, but we're still getting something here. That's how I, am I wrong in my way of thinking?
Well, but, but what you're saying is that, that we don't know what impact the 50% will have, so, because the projections you've made were at a, would have been 100% for the, the people when they're, us going 100%.
So the 70 or 50%, this is best-case scenario, as to what will happen.
Probably be something less than that, but still benefiting the district.
And I, but I do believe that the energy in Erie is going to where they're trying to grow, and we're trying, you know, people are interested in trying to make it happen, and so, I, and I, but I also believe that they understand the position we're in. So I, I too, I am leaning towards the seven-year, and if we went to a five-year with that same 50%, is it, because I mean, then, at the end of the five years, we can make another, we can make a decision, we may up it to 75% at that point, because we're, we're in better financial state, and we wanna spark it one more time five years from now. If you make the decision here, we're, they're going one spark, if it, if it, if it doesn't catch, then we're stuck with, what we're stuck with. So I would, I would like to see whether or not we wanna go to a five-year, or the seven-year 50%. That's my opinion at this time.
Again, based upon the information that you've been giving us, the financial information, and we know that, you know, four, five years out, we're, we're gonna be looking again at either refined revenue, or we're gonna be making cuts again. So I'm in agreement that, I'm more comfortable with looking at something for, for a five-year time period as opposed to 10, just because of the unpredictable nature of, of this situation that we're in. That's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. John, you got any?
I'd like to give the superintendent the confidence to continue to pursue what he thinks is best, and it seems like he's suggesting the seven-year 50%. But I'd like to still reserve the right, whatever we do, if you understand, have the understanding, we are gonna continue to process, process this and listen to the public. But am I right, Brian? Your preference would be the 70 or 50?
Well, I, I, again, I don't, I don't wanna do anything that hurts, hurts the district. I just, I'm not gonna recommend that we go with the 10-year 100% because of that. I, we've been talking with the mayor, he's been very, I think, receptive to these, these type of discussions. We went into this initially with those numbers and said, you know, we, we can't be hurt in this, so if you can find a way to possibly fill that gap in revenue through, you know, some type of pilot arrangement, or community benefit arrangement, something along that line, then, then maybe we could consider participating 100%. But absent that, then it's going to be something less than, than the 10-year 100%. So I guess if, I, I would lean towards probably something more 70 or 50% at this point, because it would give us a little additional revenue. I'd like the opportunity to take a little more time this week to study that and discuss it with our team, to see if we feel that that will, that's a good place to land, that will hopefully, you know, spark the development. Because that's what I'm most concerned about, is if we go, and if we go too far the other way trying to generate additional revenue, and it doesn't spark the development, then it's really not gonna have any impact on, on the city at all.
If that's what you want to do, I'm, I'm confident, given you that authority to proceed in that direction, but for the reasons you've just said, the things you'd wanna, you'd wanna talk about with the city. But as Robbie and Darlene mentioned, 5%, what's the downside of that? What's the reason not to? I think I know, but.
You mean five-year?
Five-year.
Five-year, no, five.
That's what I meant. What's the downside to that? Because I assume that, had that been, it would have been considered, anyway, I don't wanna answer my own question. Why, you know, what's the downside of going five years if there is money?
So, so this, if, if we do a 50, 50% LERTA, and the city and county go with a 100% LERTA, then the effective tax rate in the city is 25% versus the zero that it was under the last 10-year 100%. So the, again, it's, it's kind of a judgment call, and I'm not a economist, and we're not economic development peoples, but, you know, again, is that, is that gonna be enough to spark that development? Is a 25, a 75% discount on taxes in the city going to be enough to do that? And if it's not, then we, we probably need to move somewhere closer to the 10-year graduated to do that. So that, that's really.
So it's not enough of a lure for a potential participant to, to counsel?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So I, I still go back to, if we, if we go with five years, that might spur development quicker. We can always reassess after five years. If we feel that it, it really hasn't been as of effective tool as we'd hoped, then we could reevaluate. But again, I keep going back to the fact that I don't feel that we're in a position right now to, to look at extending this more than five years. I kind of have a strong position on it.
That's all right. You're entitled to that.
Thank you.
I just wanna speak on, and I've said this, and I've been in, in meetings with Brian too, and, and I tell him every time, I truly believe if we don't succeed as a district, the, the city's not gonna succeed, because you're not gonna bring families just by building development on the Bayfront, or by Erie Insurance. Sure, you might bring some, a few people in, but I believe those, you know, they may go live in Mill Creek and work here, you know, just like it happens all the time. And I'm not for anything that's gonna hurt us at all. And we, we've talked to them about this, if they can come up with some creative way, like Brian said, of filling our need, then, then maybe we can really look at it. But, and we want, we wanna be cooperative, we wanna try to help out, but we can't do it at our expense. That's the bottom line. We can't do it at our expense. We have to make our schools better, that's what we're looking for. We got out of a situation, you know, this last year, and moving forward, that's, we have to take care of ourselves and our students, and, and that's where we have to be. So we need someone to come up with a creative idea for us to even be in this, I believe. Just my opinion.
Is that a disagreement with the superintendent, or is that a comment that was already said?
No, it's not a disagreement at all, it's just.
All right, well, then I agree with that, because I think.
No. I mean, I'm not, the reason I say this, because I've said it in every meeting we've had with the mayor and the group, and I've said this every time, and, and just that, it's not disagreeing, Brian agrees with me, and, and we both wanna, you know, we'd, we'd like to be part of this, because it helps the city. But I believe, you know, building down across the Bayfront isn't gonna bring families back to the city, okay? Us getting better at schools, and bringing our grades up, and giving the kids a better place to learn, is gonna bring families back.
I know that I don't. I know that I don't disagree with that, Frank, but I'm just saying, if he's proceeding as he described he wants to, with the awareness of what he described that he has, I, he has my okay to do that. And I think the three of us, at least, are in harmony.
Yeah. We're just trying to figure out the best way, and Brian was just trying to look for some direction.
So we're an educational institution.
Yeah.
So I feel very strongly that we shouldn't be the ones driving this discussion, because it's not, it's not in our wheelhouse.
And I sense everybody feels that way.
That's, you know, my sense through this all along is if, I'd like to participate, but not hurt the district. And if we can benefit a little bit along the way, then that would be great too. But, but that's kind of where, I mean, if, if everybody's comfortable with me at least continuing that type of discussion with the mayor, and maybe have them come back with a recommendation for us to consider, that maybe crosses all those things off.
That's where I think we gotta be. Seriously, everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Student handbook changes.
So, a bit of give everyone, this is.
Well, it was fun.
If you wanna take one or pass, pass them around. Do you wanna take one and pass one around? So we are preparing our handbook for this coming school year, and so we wanted to go And so, we wanted to go over some of the major things that would be changes for this coming school year and then go over them with you. And then, if you have any questions or if you have concerns, then we can all adjust them accordingly and go from there. So, I've asked Neil. He's been a part of working with me on the handbook. And so, he's gonna start and then I'll interject. And if you have questions, please feel free to stop us.
There could be a couple, but we'll see.
Anytime. Sounds good.
Okay, so, I would say about maybe a month and a half ago, we really started looking through the handbook as far as what changes we needed from, or at least the administrators were looking to make. And we did send it over to Legal and Legal has made some additional changes to it. The piece of paper that you have in front of you are the substantial changes that are going to be, that we are recommending are made to the handbook for next year. I'm not gonna read through each and every single one of these, but we definitely will have conversation about most of them. The first major change comes to the dress code. The biggest change comes to the hoodie provision of what's going on in, in the schools. And the new policy says that a student can wear a hoodie to the building but is not permitted to wear it during the course of the school day. If you recall, hoodies weren't permitted this past year. And administrators asked for, if a student has their hood up, then there would be some disciplinary consequences associated with that. Part of what we're trying to do is reduce suspensions. And right now, if your hood's up, it's a suspension. Kids aren't learning when they're out of school. So, in order to fix both sets of problems, we're just going to eliminate hoodies during the school day. Other than that, there are no other major changes to the dress code.
Could I speak to that? I, I think that's a very good change. Having been a teacher, I, I just think that the hood is unnecessary in the classroom and it does lead to discipline problems. So, to eliminate the hoods is a very good move.
The next major change is to the locks and the lockers. We have always provided locks and lockers to our students. Some of the changes that are taking place this year just are strengthening the fact that all of the locks that are used are gonna be our locks with a key that the administrators have and the engineers have. And that there is going to be a master list of all of the combinations of each of the serial numbers on the back of the locks. And that is going to be locked up in a secure location.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
That's a good idea, I would say.
Yes, it is.
I guess I have a question though. Is it true that in like middle schools, they're only allowed to visit, the students are only allowed to visit their lockers twice a day? Why, why, I mean, then, these kids walk around like an 80-pound backpack.
The handbook does not have any provision as to when a student is permitted to go to their lockers. That would be a building-based decision. So, some of the administrators have only said that they can go to their lockers two times a day.
Why is, I mean, we did it all, and granted, this is a long time ago, but why? Is it, is it, is there a benefit?
Sometimes in the pod, the pod area, and so, they go from one class to another. And they're in the same area, but then they take their books with them. You know, it is the building. As Neil said, it's the building decision on how to do it. If you have to go back to your locker and then back forth, you're, it's a, they're saying wasting time versus, okay, I take all my books, I go to this class, then I go to that class and I'm ready to start my lessons. So, it is done by a building. Each building makes that determination.
It's just, it's a side issue. It's just silly. These kids walk around with, quite literally, 40-pound backpacks. They didn't ever go to the lockers. All the kids I talked to, they say, you know, we'd never go to the lockers because they're not allowed. So, they keep all of them. I don't know, there's no real value to this conversation. It just seems like, I would not want to do that, frankly.
Thank you.
That's a valid point.
Uh, the next...
It's silly. We did it all the time. You go to your locker and get your...
The one other thing that I will say, at least as far as visiting the lockers, is the teachers are only there for X number of hours. And the teachers get a prep period, they get their lunch. It's not like we're asking them to teach for seven hours and 10 minutes each day. That's as long as their day is. And so, as an administrator who has participated in creating a bell schedule and in wanting to maximize the instructional time, if we have six minutes in between periods, allowing kids to go to their lockers and exchange books, then over the span of a year, two minutes each period times 177 days becomes hours. And students aren't, students aren't learning in the hallway.
Can the teachers just stay there for a couple more minutes? We're talking minutes here. That was a union issue. I know it's silly, crazy, the kids might stay for more than seven hours and 10 minutes. My God, I wish I did that. Maybe the kids want to like back issues.
Well, that's, that's the question. I mean, the question I would have is, what he's stating as far as kids being overloaded with their books and stuff like that, I, I do believe that it wouldn't be a bad idea to, to kind of look at that throughout the buildings. And if that is something that is happening pretty, you know, like to ev, like to, it's just having a grand effect, that that would be something that we could, we could talk about. And maybe a board policy would be something that, because any, any, any policy that's within the building is that way because we've never made a decision on that policy. So, there's nothing, I mean, I just think it's something that should be examined and maybe brought, the information brought back to us and we could discuss it further.
We can definitely...
How many periods a day occur in middle school?
The, so, we have some having seven and then most of them have seven. They're, they're all on seven-period days. So, but then in the high schools, we have it on block schedule. So, they go four blocks. So, it is the middle school. So, let, I'm, we'll go back to the three middle schools and find out what their policies, what have they been doing in order to look at that? And then we'll bring that back next week.
There might be one that works better than the other and they just don't talk, so they don't know.
Yeah, so, we will definitely come back to you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Neil.
The next couple of changes all really have to do with attendance. I'm waiting. The, the majority of the changes that were made were so that there would be consistency between what we're doing with assignments and what we're trying to work out with the district magistrates when it comes to them handing down consequences for truancy. And then some of the other changes will fall more in line with how us as a district are going to be graded with the new P.A. Ready Index. So, that first bullet that you have there basically talks about how historically, if you were absent and it was unexcused, that student does not get an opportunity to make up that assignment and so, it goes as a negative grade. We've been working very closely with all the district magistrates and many of them, instead of finding the students, are issuing them to complete community service, which he will, many of them will accept as you staying for extra help. And so, if you can imagine, many of the missing assignments that these students have is when they were absent. And so, changing the policy will permit the teachers to grade those assignments that they have missing. And in the end, we're just trying to educate the students. The excused absence, there was a section that used to be quarantine. And so, this is eliminating that because I've been with the district for 14 years. I've never seen a student quarantine because of an illness, which is good. The next big one talks about family vacations. This change will no longer permit a family vacation as being a legal absence. The P.A. Ready Index will grade us, one of the indicators is going to be chronic absenteeism, which is defined as 10 percent of the school year, which is 18 days. And so, permitting a family to go on vacation for an extended amount of time counts towards that absenteeism.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Farisi. I'd like to speak. I just, when I, I read this over, I mean, when you sent it, I read it over. And that, that just kind of hit me hard there to, to, I, I don't believe that that should be changed. I believe that if a family has an opportunity for a vacation at some point and they make arrangements with the school, if you want to put some considerations or some requirements on what the child has to do to make it an excused, but I don't think that a kid should end up in court because his family went to Disneyland. Okay? Because that's what you're saying. You're saying that, okay, so the family says, I don't care what the school says. I got a vacation paid for, you're coming. So, they bring the kid, you're charging them with 10 days of illegal absences. He had eight during the, during the year for whatever reasons, actual, whatever. And so, now he is, now he is gonna end up in, in a courtroom because of that. I mean, we have got more strict. The state has changed some laws on truancy. We are trying to address truancy in a lot of different ways. And I applaud all of that. I think this has taken one step over the line. And as she was talking before about, or the, the citizen that spoke about public relations, we're trying to bring this community together and to do something that is a family decision and come in there and say, you can't do that, I think would be the wrong direction to move. But that's just me, so...
Mr. Spiegel.
Mr. President, I would say that that'd be fine if all the schools in the area had the same schedule. We went on vacation this year and I had three kids in three different schools. So, we tried to go, we, we tried to, we sat down, okay, what is gonna be the most overlap? You know, and that's what we had to do. So, if my, I'll do it with the policies or not. I'm going on vacation next year, whether you plan it or not, we're gonna do it. So, it doesn't really affect my child, but I think it's silly because they could have robbed me completely. My kid, if we go to, if somebody's planning a vacation, is he gonna go to court because he's having a life experience going to Ghana somewhere? You know, you never know. It's silly. I, I think it's almost funny and yet to deal with, you have like finance though.
I understand. Ms. Feeney.
Are we capable of putting in a limit to the number of days that parents would be able to go on vacation? That way, parents can still take their children on vacation, but just not for as long a period of time. So, something that would be reasonable.
The thing, if you look down on B, where it says a student is considered absent if he or she is not physically participating in instruction on the school grounds for at least a half of that school day. Thus, excused absences are counted toward the chronically absent count. That is why we put it in there because if they're not in that building and as part of that building, then that would be considered an absence.
And I technically agree with that. But that's where my educators have right now, where my parent had. And I think that vacation is also an educational opportunity. So, I see both forms. But it would, if we could compromise, would that be less of an impact then against us on the P.A. Readiness Index?
And we've talked about other alternatives for that as possibly looking at what, what they are going to do and seeing what would happen. But because this is new for the Future Ready Index, we need a little bit more guidance from PDE on that. Or we need to make a decision as an LEA to decide, what does that look like? If I'm going for 10 days to Disneyland, what does that do for my core courses? If I'm going for 15 days to visit my uncle in Puerto Rico, what does that look like? There's a lot of different vacation-type things. What we could do is really look at the past two years and what families have done and see what, how, how big of a chronic issue it is. And then come back to you next week and review it. This is the beginning of the handbook. We like to get it done in June. If there's certain pieces that we have to really do a little more research, then we will try to do that and maybe have, you know, additional meeting for you to, to pass it before it goes through print. But what we can do is that to really get an idea of how many families are using it as a vacation and what the, the maybe alternatives of that versus illegal.
And we obviously have to do something because I do feel that we are finding more and more. I, I think I'm gonna see the data that shows that, that this has been growing. Parents are taking their children on vacation more often and for longer periods of time. Another thing that we could possibly do is, is expect that they need to present to us exactly what their plans are. And that might also, that might also eliminate as many vacations.
Mr. Spiegel.
I, I just, my gut feeling is if families that are involved enough, and this is probably not a good thing to say, we've been thinking of, the families that are involved enough to take their children on vacations probably aren't the ones that have the truancy issues as much as those that don't take a lot of vacations, that are absent, my goodness, over the reports 65 days. Those kids probably are going to business.
The, the other impact is that, and I don't know how big this is. So, if a family goes away on vacation for, and this would be extreme, let's say it's 15 days, right? You go somewhere, you enjoy your vacation, you have a good experience. That literally gives that student three days of excused absences before he is, he or she is considered to be chronically absent. And so, might be a very good student, might not miss those extra three days. But if they do, now all of a sudden, that will reflect poorly on us as a district through this P.A. Ready Index. We, we can look at some data.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do at this point.
If I could just make one more point, if I could just, you know, I mean, some requirements put on the student at, at some point or something like that may be the way to go is that they have to do so much. I mean, my grandson, a couple went and he was doing homework. Now, I, you know, so, I mean, all I'm saying is maybe some, especially since we have online situations, we could figure out a way that if a kid's on vacation and we can cooperate with the teacher. I mean, I know that it might be a little bit more work for a teacher at any given point to try to keep the kid up to par during that period of time. Maybe a time limit might be something that, you know, 10 days is okay. Over that is too, is too much. I can understand, you know, that, that that's, you're taking a kid. Maybe the kid's grades may be an incentive that you may be able to say to the kids in the beginning of the year, if there's a vacation, if your grades are at a certain level, you'll be able to take off that time. If they're not, then they're not. You know, maybe the request for vacation has to be made in a longer period of time beforehand so that it's not, you know, just calling up and saying, this is what it is. I, I don't mind having some regulation on it. But I think to say right off the bat that if you take your kid out of town, that you're, you're, you're promoting a kid, you're, you're teaching a kid that the parent's gonna say, you're coming. And so, truancy is whatever it is. Whereas, we want the kid to realize that not going to school and it, as an illegal absence, is the wrong thing to do. So, that's, that's my point.
If you can look at the data and see, we're going from there.
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out one thing with the P.A., Future Ready P.A. Index. The definition of absent for purposes of this index is whether the child is physically participating instruction on school grounds for at least half of the school day. So, from an expectation perspective for the school board, when the data is presented by the administration, whatever it may be, any reports or educational value of the vacation indices that they may look at is not going to impact that chronic, chronic absenteeism or tru- tru- absenteeism. We'll go with that, for the purpose of the Future Ready P.A. Index.
Yeah, I understand that. But it can also show us whether there's 1,000 kids that are going on vacation every year or is it 10 families?
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware that you had to be physically present in the school to be counted for the purpose of that index.
Okay. Go ahead, Neil.
The next provision spells out specifically when weather can actually be a, a reason for a legal excuse. Now, obviously, if the superintendent closes school for that day, that's one thing. We have gone through this past year and there have been a number of times when we've had parental discretion. So, this outlines what actually means for it to be parental discretion. So, if the weather is so bad that the parents feel that they, they should not be sending their child to school, then the only way that that day becomes marked as legally excused is if a note is presented. Just because the superintendent says that the parents should use their discretion does not mean that that day automatically becomes excused. And then the last provision as far as, at least in this section goes, is the idea that if a senior accumulates more than 20 unexcused... that if a senior accumulates more than 20 unexcused absences during their senior year, then that student is not permitted to participate in the graduation ceremony. We legally cannot say you cannot get your diploma as long as they've met their requirements. All this simply states is that they cannot participate in the ceremony.
Why is that? Because they missed 20 days of school?
Unexcused, not legally excused.
Okay, unexcused, still 20 days. Why?
This is something that the administration at the high school felt very strongly about. It actually used to be in the rulebook, the handbook, I want to say about three years ago, and it simply said was not, student was not permitted to graduate.
So even if, I'm just questioning. Let's say they do have plenty of unexcuse, but yet they're passing everything and they have plenty to graduate, but they still can't lock down the yacht.
The administration at the high schools feel that because...
It's an incentive to make them?
It's an incentive to, yes, to make them come to school, that once a student turns 17 years old, there is no longer a compulsory education truancy law. So if you're 18 and you're a senior and you're passing everything, well, I'm just not going to come to school. They can't do anything to me. And so if we look, if we think back to the strategic plan and all the data that we looked at, historically, the seniors' attendance is one of the worst at the high school level. And so the thought is that this will start to turn the tide as far as students being in the school their senior year.
That's, that's one of the game changers in our strategic plan, is to ensure that 90% of our students are attending 95% of the time. So again, in addition to the P.A. ready index, that's something that, you know, that our support planning team felt was very important for students actually coming.
The next item, as far as attendance goes, is it clarifies that building administrators are only allowed to accept a written excuse after, up to 10 calendar days after the absence, which is very reasonable. I believe now it says three days, but then go right ahead.
This is one of those, again, we're really working on attendance, trying to getting everyone there. And what we also have are the new truancy laws. And we're seeing a lot of assistant principals who are sending reminders, please send the excuse in, please send the excuse in. And they're waiting, and it's a month later, and they're getting these excuses. And so our goal is for us to really reach out to families now, sooner rather than later, and explain that it is a district policy and that they can only accept it after 10 days. And the hope is that they're either calling or they're sending an extra paper to say, just fill this out saying why that child was absent that day, so that we can really start to be accounting for why students are absent so much. And that's the one piece for number 5C.
5F is a rule that kind of puts us a little bit more in line with what we should be doing. Currently, the way that we've handled this is if a student didn't go to homeroom, and they just maybe went the first period, they were marked unexcused for the day, which doesn't really make any sense because they were there. And so this gets rid of that sentence that was previously in the handbook. And that's it for attendance.
It seems like that one would help our numbers a lot.
Yeah.
Kids are late for a number of reasons. They don't go to home room, whatever.
Section 7, the continuum of discipline consequences is going to be removed. So the thought behind this one is that if you, the way it used to be in the past, if this was my third disciplined fraction, the principals would just go down the continuum and, okay, third time you're here, now I'm going to suspend you. And as minor as that could have been, that third event, they would refer back to the continuum. Well, I just gave you a two-hour detention, so now I'm suspending you for a day. The thought behind this is, number one, that that was confusing to some of the administrators. Number two, it means that the student is going to be consequence based on whatever infraction occurred versus following a flow chart. And so we want to try to match what we're doing with what the actual behavior was with an appropriate consequence. The other thing is that if you follow the continuum, there could have been an opportunity where somebody would be referred to this board for expulsion versus going through one of the alternative programs first. So that has been deleted.
So they would still consider those previous things if they felt that that was necessary, right? But they don't have to follow the correct...
Yeah, absolutely. So if you cut class all the time, and this is the fourth time that you were caught cutting class, I'm not going to go ahead and just suspend you because you're at that level on the continuum. You cut class, we're going to discipline you based on this, and then hopefully they're working and talking with the students and trying to intervene with, well, why are you cutting class?
Well, I like that because it makes this subjective, really. So the principal, the superintendent, whoever knows this kid versus this kid, he's a good kid, he's a bad kid, whatever it is. But I guess the fine line there is, you know, hey, Johnny was cut, skipped class three times, Suzie did three times, why is she, why is it different set at this point? Are we opening ourselves up to any legal issues yet?
There could be a concern. There are no two disciplinary set of facts that are exactly the same, in my experience. And hopefully, we would be able to differentiate any level of discipline based on any of the attenuating situations related to that particular student. However, giving some level of subjectivity or discretion does lead to more of an opportunity for that discretion to go over the line. But hopefully, with the manner in which the rest of the handbook is addressed, we're going, is designed, we're going to limit the opportunity for any of that liability to occur. And I would think that with Mr. Brockman's position in being able to monitor the discipline on a regular basis, that if there were situations that you were seeing that were going to be out of hand, we'd hope that they would be addressed before they would get out of control.
I just have one question. So are you saying that now a principal would have the right to, I mean, the continuum of, you know, the phrase that you used, would that meant that, you know, it graduates upward to the severity of the punishment, right? Does that mean that you could go right to the worst severe right off the bat? I mean, that you're taking that, you're taking the step system away, like?
So what this talks about is the fourth time you're in my office, they would work through that continuum and kind of becomes, whatever that was, that fourth time, I'm going to probably suspend you, or I'm going to do this to you. What this doesn't speak to at all is the leveled system of the infractions that we have. We have level one infractions, level two infractions, and level three infractions. And that maps out for the administration what an appropriate consequence is for such acts.
Mr. Fabrizio, I think the concern here with the continuum and getting rid of that is you could have a fighting situation, you could have a fighting situation, fighting situation, and then the fourth time that you go in, it would be a...
Skip class.
Skip class tardy.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, you've got to get a suspension for the tardy.
Right.
Even though it is relatively minor, considering everything else that's going on. So it's going to help give some more realistic options, but they need to be measured.
And section 7 and 7C, which is the next one, also kind of relate to our strategic plan, because we're talking about equity and we're talking about fairness. And when we also look at a student who doesn't want to come to school, they're going to act up, and then we say, you go home, you're suspended for the day. Well, what is that doing for that student? Nothing. So that's where section 7C brings in in-school suspension, so that they're staying in school. You're not going home, we're going to work with you, we're going to talk to you, we're going to try to help you with what's going on in your life, to give our students a chance to figure out what's going on. And then again, it specifically in section 7C talks about that chronic absenteeism, because we worry about that, because a lot of times they don't want to be there. And so we've got to figure that out.
Mr. Spiegel.
You know, was the ISS taken out because of the budget issue? It seems like it's a good thing.
I believe so. I mean, we're talking, what, 10 years since the last time it was in the handbook as an appropriate consequence? I mean, at least 10 years.
Yeah, I'm glad it's done.
So he touched on that one. The next one is the electronic communications device policy. There was no real changes to this. There was just the emphasis placed on the district's policy is that cell phones are not permitted to be used during the day, but each individual building has the authority to authorize the use of cell phones at certain given points during the day. And so all we, all that was done is we made a couple of things bolded and just kind of added it in a couple of places. The next big change is we've seen a number of events this year where what may have started out as a one-on-one fight escalated to something that could be a bigger event. And so if a student, students engage in a fight that leads to a very large crowd, something that could be considered worse than just a one-on-one fight, the result, that event can actually then be categorized as something greater than a fight, and it would wind up falling into the disorderly conduct range, if not the endangerment range, which are two different provisions that are in the handbook.
I think that happens because of the phone. You know, I mean, there's, I mean, today, when we were kids, if there was a fight, the word had to spread, there's going to be a fight, there's going to be a fight, it had to go first to first. Now they hit a button, and 35 kids go to show up over here, you know, so.
You know, a couple weeks ago, I had to go to visit Rick Fattelli. I counted 17 kids from the time that I went into the front doorway of Erie High School. This is during class, that I'm looking in the class, taking my time. 17 kids were on their phones. First, there were like three or four in the first class, we were going to leave at a break. But then every school, 17 kids, and I just walked, you know where Rick's offices is, there, thrown back. 17, I count things all the time, I mean, wow, 17 kids. That's a lot. This is, they looked in, class is going on, and all these kids are looking on the phone. So I strongly encourage no phone use at all. If, I don't know how to enforce that.
They're discussing that, because one of the things they're doing over, for example, at Erie High is one of the schools that is looking at this, they're putting their ninth grade in an area, and 11th grade in an area, and they're moving some of the classrooms around. So, you know, they need to enforce certain pieces, and this is where they sat down with all of us to talk through this. So there's going to be some changes in the schools that are having and seeing this as an issue. There are some classrooms, if you go, they actually use their phones for a lesson, and they use them for research and doing different things. So it's one of those things that...
It's a technology.
Yeah, it depends on the building and on their work as an administrative team. But there are some buildings that are absolutely looking at it to work on, putting them away for instructional time.
And the other, oh, Mr. President.
Yes.
The other aspect, the other aspect may be, maybe, it may be safety. If your kid's going to school, you want that kid to have the phone. Now, he shouldn't be using that phone, but you want that kid to have that phone. You know what I mean? For whatever, if something was going on, something with him, was that?
He said if they let him in the locker once in a while, then they'd use their phone.
Mr. President, so my concern is with the elementary schools. I know that a few of the elementary schools do have lockers for some students, but most don't. I know as a, personally as a teacher, there came a time where for the safety of the kid's cell phones, I had to take their cell phones and check them in every morning, lock them in my desk, and then pass them out at the end of the day. And I don't think that's a responsibility a teacher should have to take on. So I don't know what we're going to do on the elementary level for cell phones. Do we have any discussions going on about that? They can't. If they're storing them in their bookbag and they're storing them in the hallway, then... They're not safe. Thank you.
Okay. I thought this wasn't going to take long, though. I'm just kidding.
I'm trying to get through it.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, so the next big change is actually in addition to the code of conduct, a violation known as retaliation is going to be added to the handbook, which is exactly what you think it would be. The next one deals with terroristic threats and threats to students and staff. And based on the events that are occurring, there's been some things added to this definition, such as if there's a picture or drawing or an illustration of violence towards another student or staff, those are going to be considered terroristic threats. Obviously, we take this very seriously, and so this kind of strengthens this provision of the handbook. The last other addition would be under the unauthorized substances, the vapes. So those are one of the things that was not listed in the past. The next two basically have to do with student services and they're a direct reflection to some of the changes in the immunization law. That's at least section 21. There are two reasons why a student may be exempt from the immunization requirements, one being a medical, the other one being religious. There are a couple of districts that have turned to a provisional attendance plan, which basically says that if the student is not, does not have their appropriate shots when they start, that they can prove that they have a doctor's appointment, that lists exactly what shots they need and when they're going to go there, and then the students would be provisionally allowed to attend. I saw a couple of school districts that have given kids up to 60 days, some have given way less. I think that's also something that we would have to look at and have a district-wide form that if this is going to happen, that everybody, we do the same thing across the board. And then obviously, the last part of that is that it was updated to reflect the statutory rights of students who are considered to be homeless or in foster care situations, and how the federal government says that they actually are allowed to attend school prior to receiving those immunizations. And then the last big change comes to the head lice provision. I believe we were the only district around that had a no NIT policy, so they had the eggs, they had to go where they weren't allowed to attend. That provision has been removed to bring us more in line with everybody else, I guess, just in Erie County.
So you're allowed to have NIT in school then?
Yes.
Is that a good thing? I mean, you and I don't have to do it that way.
You're not kidding.
I don't know, I'm going to help a professional, is that a good thing to do?
Recommended by the CDC. Yes, Angela.
So in line with, you know, not only the strategic plan regarding attendance and also with the future P.A. index and what that means for us for attendance, we were looking at that policy because as Neil said, we are the only, or one of the only districts in the county that still has a known NIT policy. Now, obviously, if there was a live infestation, it would be a different story, but the American Academy of Pediatrics and also the National Association of School Nurses does not recommend a known NIT policy because there's no evidence that suggests that keeping a kid out for NIT as opposed to live infestation prevents the spread of lice in schools, and it is a significant issue in some of our schools. Not all of them, but there are some schools where kids are being kept out for extended periods because they have trouble getting rid of the NITs.
Okay. Yes.
I was just going to say, so what I've heard from you, if this is all right, we will look into getting the middle school schedules regarding the lockers, so we have an idea of what's consistent across the three. We will get information regarding vacations and those long extended absences and get some information of possible solutions to that, and speak with Jenny and try to clean that up for us. If those are the two areas, then we would be able to bring that to you on next week?
We ain't done yet.
Oh. Oh, okay. And then one other thing... And then, one other thing, just to, to clarify, our hope is that if we do get this done for June, if it's ready for June, we would like to begin the discussion about attendance and truancy and Ms. Devlin and all of the work that she does with communication, because it is something our families really need to understand. And I think a lot of our concerns with attendance, sometimes our families don't understand what we're, we're required to do, and if we can start to communicate with them...
What I would suggest, Dee, is if you can get this information quickly and send it to us, so we are able to review it at home, so when we come to the next week, we can have the discussion and we don't get into, if anybody has any questions about it, they can send them back to you instead of...
Sure.
We'll send it in the mailing on Friday.
You know what I mean? Instead of, you know, at the, at our committee of the whole, that day, we may not be able to resolve it, is what I'm saying.
The other thing, too, is getting Jenny, if we touch base with Jenny, maybe she can review it as well and maybe make some adjustments to it prior to that meeting, so we can get that to you on Friday. We'll, we'll try to get that to you on Friday.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just one more thing. The, when we're talking about the parents, like informing the parents of the attendance issues and stuff, I think that disciplinary actions, the, the changes in the disciplinary, the, the dress code, the hoodies, the, the way that we've changed, if there's a fight, it brings on, that some kind of a, a program or some kind of a presentation should be put together for our Erie High students, you know, all, both high schools, but I'm saying, right at the beginning of the year, saying, this is, this is, these are changes, this is how it is, and, you know, to make them aware right away, getting through to the students the best way we can, so that's all.
I guess I'd like to add to that. We, we are oftentimes rushed in going through the discipline policy handbook, so I don't know if there's a way to build that into the schedule where this year, teachers know that they have a little bit more time to cover all these areas.
Yes, because they do sign off. Students have to sign off, saying that they received it and they were, they discussed it in class. So, every student does that, and then they take it home with them to share with their families.
Mr. Pedringer?
Yes.
I'd just let Mr. Fabrizio know, we also talked about doing a, a district-wide mailing this summer. That was very effective last summer when we had so many changes. So, talked to Mr. Polito and Ms. Saversky about a letter to all families, talking about some changes that we have and including the changes to the discipline policy, particularly around safety, talking, have the parents talk to their kids, don't make threats, because this is how it's going to be treated. So, we will be working on a mailing this summer to let some of those highlights be known.
I'm just speaking like verbally to the students, whether it be from the homeroom teachers, whether it be some, a verbal, like, look, this is change, and if this happens, you're going to have a problem. That, that's all I'm saying.
I think Don should do one with the Deadpool. You know, he did Solo already, so, you know. All right. Mr. Tyler, go right ahead.
All right. Thank you. So, actually, a lot of this discussion made what I was going to present much easier because we've, we've talked on a lot of it. What I wanted to address tonight with the board is really, and Mr. S, is looking at our, our zero tolerance as it comes to specifically with weapons. I know we've talked about a lot of the things with, in alliance with the strategic plan, how, you know, eliminating the continuum. I think that this would be another great example of that everything is case-specific, and that we really need to look at every incident separated, instead of just having this blanket punishment for every kid, because we don't know. And one example, like, you know, when kids are bringing things in from their place of employment, maybe not remembering that they had it in their book of bank, but it's considered a weapon, and so, they're, they're facing expulsion. I brought in a bunch of the research, but I won't, I won't go through it, because we've all been a pretty verbose group tonight. One of the things that I'll, I'll share, though, is, is that the research flat out indicates that it's not deterring any behavior to have zero tolerance. It's actually increasing the likelihood of subsequent suspensions or expulsions, so the kids who, who need our help the most are actually not in the building getting any of the services that they need. And consistently, the research is showing that it's disproportionate with, with which kids are, are being expelled, and what, especially kids of color, or who are in more popular schools, which we, as a, as a district, have a higher population of. So, we're punishing the kids who need our help the most with, with this policy. So, I'd really just like to, for us as a group, when we're, when we're looking at this, to maybe, whatever strategic plan group has, has, is dealing with the, the discipline areas, to kind of look at the relevance of this. I think it needs updating.
Well, I think that's actually a policy we can create as a board, as far as the zero tolerance. And, and I, I agree with you, because there are situations, like when I just do a few expulsions, most of the time, when I go to those, there's already been a deal made. So, no matter what, they already made a deal, and whatever's happened, happened. You know what I mean? And I think, a lot of times, there are situations that don't deserve to be expulsion. You know what I mean? And that's our job is, when we sit on those, to, to make that determination. But if a deal's already made, we can't make that determination. So, I think the guidelines should be a little bit, you know, before it gets to expulsion, like you're saying.
I'm, I'm happy to see that our in-school suspension is coming back, because I think that's a golden opportunity to really do some great interventions with some of the kids who need us.
President?
Yes.
If I could speak, I'm not sure if I'm right on the history, John, or Dee may be able to help me, but I remember zero tolerance coming in, and before that, though, it was like the discretion of the superintendent. I mean, if there was a situation where it was a first grader that by accident put something into his backpack, now, the attorneys have to move forward with that. They can't, they have to move forward with that. And that's, and because they took the discretion away from the superintendent. So, I think that that's basically what we're talking about, is to give the discretion back to the superintendent to make the decision whether or not this warrants the, the punishment that's there, right? That's all I'm...
You'd like to speak to that?
Yeah. I, I think, and Attorney said, wasn't that a federal requirement years ago?
I'm much better looking, I am younger.
That walk really changed you.
I had better hair.
So...
So, Mr. Polito, Act 26 in Pennsylvania requires zero tolerance for weapons, and requires that an expulsion occur for a period of no less than one year. That period of no less than one year can be amended if it's based upon the recommendation of the superintendent. So, the, our ability to impact that zero tolerance, we'll have to research that and determine from a legal perspective, how do we do that and stay in compliance with Act 26? But at this point, it's still a minimum one-year expulsion unless the superintendent recommends otherwise.
Is that a federal requirement?
I, I believe it's a state.
I think it's something we have to look at.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, if it's a first grader, for example, and they go through the entire packet, they do prepare the packet, we review the packet, and on behalf of the superintendent, in conjunction with the building, buildings, many of them, if it is a first grader that had a pocket knife that they were just bringing to school, then they would do other alternative, and it wouldn't go all the way to the...
Well, I sat in on one where it was a young kid, and his brother put the pocket knife in his backpack, and some deal was made, but the kid was getting suspended anyways, where I thought it, it could have went a different way.
Expelled, you mean?
Yeah.
The expulsion?
Yeah.
We are, we are looking at each individual case. So, for example, if it's a first grader that had the pocket knife and he had it, and the building will do a behavior, a behavior plan, and that is done by our attorneys. They do the plan, we get the plan, then the building is monitoring that. If there's another incident that occurs, then they go to a different level. But each one, it is reviewed, the full packet needs to be completed, and then it is reviewed, and then that determination is made. Many times, they don't go all the way through expulsion in lieu of...
Mr. President, what about the one that I sat in, and I'm sure I sat in a lot, so I can't remember. This might have been four, five years ago, there was a kid coming to work, or coming to school from Valerio's, he was, I believe, and he had a, a box cutter, and he was late going into, at the time, Central, and at that time, anybody late, they had to have their backpacks checked. So, they checked, they found a box cutter, this kid's a senior, good grades, running right, running late because he's working, and then, I can't recall, I think that he was, he had to be expelled, and it screws up his college, everything else, I mean, just because he's, he's a box cutter. I mean, you know, that's, that's, the little kid, you can get, work around that, but now, this is a senior, has a potential knife, I mean, but how do we not screw him up? You know how many times I, I keep knives in my hand, I shoot when I walk in the school?
Yes, Mr. Senator. Mr. Casillo, if I may.
Oh, nice. I like that fresh air in here.
Just so we're aware, what the state law says in, in the Pennsylvania School Code, Section 1317.2, except as otherwise provided, a school district shall expel for a period of not less than one year any student who is determined to have brought onto or is in possession of a weapon on any school district property, at any school district-sponsored activity, or any school conveyance, which would be a bus transportation, providing transportation to a school or school-sponsored activity. The exceptions to that are weapons used as part of a program approved by a school, by an individual who has participated in that program, so that would be like a wood shop, I would think, that's the obvious one to me, or a weapon that is unloaded and possessed by an individual while traversing school property for the purpose of obtaining access to public lands for hunting. Nothing in this section shall be construed as limiting the authority or duty of a school to make an alternative assignment or provide alternative education services during the period of expulsion. The, then it goes on to other things that are not necessarily... Yeah, I mean, it does say, "The school superintendent or chief administrator shall report the discovery of any weapon prohibited by this section to local law enforcement officials," and so on. So, there's other things that need, that are spoken to, and it defines a weapon as including but not limited to any knife, cutting instrument, cutting tool, nunchuck, firearm, shotgun, rifle, and any other tool, instrument, or implement capable of inflicting serious bodily injury. It does specifically indicate in here that the superintendent may, on a case-by-case basis, modify, may recommend modifications of such student on a case-by-case basis. That, that section saying that the superintendent may recommend that means that the superintendent is recommending that to the board, because there is an automatic legal trigger for expulsion. In order for that to be lessened, you have to go through with the expulsion, expulsion process, and then we take that recommendation from the superintendent for a lesser penalty or punishment, and that is then when we recommend that to the board. So, that's why that process is in place.
Our, our policy does not have that in there at this point?
I, I don't think it will.
It does, unpaid...
In, in all of the expulsions that I've sat through, and considering I see all of these students on the other end of the hearing, that is in, that is in every single hearing, the verbiage that the superintendent has the ability to hand out expulsion for less than a, a calendar year. And considering there have probably only been a handful of ones where I was not in on the hearing, I can tell you that this year, there has only been one student who's received a full calendar year for his offenses.
But I said that, in the language, though, let's, it would be clear, you can reduce the expulsion or reduce the discipline, because I'd hate to have a good kid expelled.
You can reduce the amount of time that the expulsion occurs.
But I think Tim said discipline.
It says may recommend modifications of such expulsion.
It's still going to say expelled.
I don't think, I, because I remember, and I think that's why I called the Attorney Senate, that we went through this at Northeast a year before I left.
So, I'm just telling you, I mean, I, I'm not a large fan of giving legal opinions on the fly, reading it off my phone at a meeting. So, I can, all I can tell you is what it says. However, there is always case law and interpretation that then further modifies those statutes that I don't have the benefit of right now. So, prior, I'll get you that answer. Mr. Pedringer, yes.
Can you, can you look at it and get it to us, too, so that'd be another thing that we can...
Mr. President, I'd also like to request Mr. Wright to...
It's going back to the sun.
Could you find, because I know, I know that the state made the changes, that they made some changes, and then there was a resolution by the board to, to adhere to those changes. So, could, can we, can we find that resolution so that we can examine that and see if we want to make, if we're able to make changes? You can advise us in that, in that manner? Thank you.
I think we led, before the state enacted that law, I think we had a policy with good intentions to assure the public that we were taking it seriously. We went way out in front early, and then that came.
Oh, that's...
We began to discover that it was getting in the way of common sense sometimes. So, I think we did adjust, maybe not enough, but I think Tyler's request is reasonable. I think I said so long ago. But I think we started before the state did.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the budget.
Hour and forty-five minutes in, and we're going to talk about the budget.
That's pretty good, though. Before, it'd have been budget all the way.
True.
Thank you.
All right. So, what we have on the agenda to approve for next week is the, the final budget. And I got to summarize what it is on here, and a couple of the points that are really mentioned as we talk about it on here. So, the first slide here, similar to what you saw last month, what I have in the first column is basically the budget that we were discussing at the last meeting. And then, this column here is what is actually on the agenda to be approved. This column over here being the changes to it, so very, very small modifications to it overall. Overall, these, these top four changes here really are really fully implementing the transportation changes that we planned on doing, with the, taking back some runs from first student and some other outside organizations, fully implementing the increase in salaries we expect to see with adding more drivers, adding some, some of the benefits for that, plus there was a few little modifications in there for benefits that are very small overall, and adding some additional fuel costs for additional buses and maintenance supplies and everything. Last month, when you saw, we did have a decrease in the purchase service line, so that's why you don't see it here, because it was included last month. This is just really getting the final numbers in for the additional employees. So, this is before any of the transportation changes that we might, that we'll be talking about a little bit later. So, this is the scenario that we discussed maybe at, at last month, really, the full implementation of it there. So, I guess we'll talk transportation a little bit later, too, though. So, basically, these four changes here for that come out to a total change of this $400,000, or $450,000 here. So, the reason why you see it over here with the transfer of the capital reserve fund is because, as we talked about, we want to keep a $8 million general fund balance. So, that would involve basically making the revenues and the expenses equal, so we have a zero, so there's basically no surplus or deficit at the end of, at the end of the eighteen, nineteen year, basically keeping that $8 million balance there, giving the general fund flexibility to pay bills when they're necessary and not have to really scrape for cash at any point in time. So, this is going to be what's on the PDE 2028 form that's attached to the agenda right now. Any questions on these changes? Overall, very small, we're pretty much still very much in line with the, the large book that you, that you received a while ago. So, again, going into that, then, that the budget does include a half percent real estate tax increase, so this is just the, so the half percent is in there, so we did increase real estate taxes by about $210,000 because of that. That, every half a percent that we would go up in these steps is going to be another $210,000. So, our Act 1 index is 3.7 percent, so if we were to go to that, it would generate $1.5 million officially. But in your, in the proposed budget, it's a half a percent officially on the agenda right now. So, again, this is the same slide that you saw, that you saw last month or two months ago, it might have been last month, two, I don't remember. So, this is basically by year, the Consumer Price Index, or basically an inflationary measure, what, what the history of that is, and we see over this, over the number of years that we have up here, inflation has gone up about 1.9 percent annually every year after that. This, the middle column here is the cost, is the cost of living adjustments related to the, to the social security benefits over that same period of time, 1.9 percent also. Cost of living adjustments are really calculated off of inflation, so it's really no surprise that they do line up over, over a period of time there. The tax rate increases for the, for the school district... in the final column, over that period of time, we average about one and a half percent. So these economic measures are outpacing the tax rate increases slightly when we look at the same time period there. I have the point five percent highlighted there because it is not official yet. So once it is, I will then do that. But that's still just, it's still proposed out there and not an officially approved one yet. Any questions here on how we're coming up with this? So this next slide is going to have it here, expected real estate tax increases of the local school districts. So I want to highlight the word "expected" because these are not official, only, I believe only one of them is official. This is just sort of an informal survey that I have with all the local business managers, just seeing what sort of percentages other districts are increasing real estate taxes around us. So these seven here are the ones that are, that really immediately surround the City of Erie School District. The top four here, you'll see that they pretty much are increasing at or really just below the Act One index. And then average of all the ones that surround us is about two and a half percent. So us being at a half percent, the other school districts are increasing more than that there. Let's kind of put this in dollars, going back to what the third slide or second slide of the, of the presentation. Half percent gives us about $200,000 in revenue. Two point five, two point five percent would be about a million dollars in revenue, to put it in numbers wise. So really, so this is just sort of indicating that the other school districts, again, are really outpacing us with the real estate tax increases. So as we go and we talk about this, this is the same exact chart that we put up two months ago. I didn't want to change it because, again, those were expected increases. I didn't want to put them on here, kind of with the perception that it would be set in stone. So we can discuss on how this is going to change, really. So this is real estate taxes with, for a $100,000 home with the homestead exemption in the City of Erie. So obviously, the county one, all of these school districts are in Erie County. So they would all have the same county taxes. The next bar being with the school taxes on a $100,000 home with the exemption. Again, Erie being over here, more towards the end. If those expected tax increases do happen, as they are in there, what we'll see is that Iroquois, Wasburg, Fairview, and Harbor Creek, they're all increasing real estate taxes at a rate higher than us. So basically, their bars are going to grow more than ours when we get this official for next year. So that gap, basically, we're going to fall behind a little bit more. They're going to go up more than us. Mill Creek, I believe they are officially at the two percent. If, and their two percent increase would then end up moving them to the other side of us, so we would fall back. And one more, just being ahead of Fort LeBeuf and GM School District there. And then, of course, the last, the green bars that we talked about before, that represents the City of Erie municipal tax on it where we, where we see larger discrepancies there. So yeah, really, no changes from the last time you saw this, but kind of explain how we expect this to change in the future.
Yeah, I'd love that. And so this is the newspaper. I think more telling than anything else of getting people moved, you know? I just think that everybody complains about our school taxes. But I thought that is the news?
No, pick your voice, please, to write about it. That's it, I was going to be quiet this evening, but you know, I know.
So as we talk, these red bars do include the homestead exemption for basically our homestead exempt parcels. So this, this slide kind of summarizes our homestead exemption. In the City of Erie, there's about 17,000 plus parcels that have the homestead exemption. So basically, they are homes that are owned by the person that primarily resides in there. So there's a general rule there. So by doing that, they then get an exemption on the real estate taxes. And for each partial, each parcel, that comes out to about $340 for each, for each individual parcel. So the, it's basically a $5.9 million allocation that we get from the state. It's, so it's basically state money that comes into us. And instead of, it's basically, we get that money directly from the state and we basically take that $5.9 million off the tax rolls. So theoretically, it's really revenue neutral for us, but it's at the benefit of the taxpayers in the City of Erie because they don't have to pay that $5.9 million to us. The state pays it for them. And so the 342, again, so that is a flat amount for each parcel. So if the parcel is valued at $50,000, they get $340 off, which is over half of their bill, or maybe about that, or a little bit under half of their bill. If the parcel is valued at $1.5 billion, they still get $340 off. So much, so much smaller. So it's really impactful on the lower assessed value homes. It's very, very powerful when you get down to the lower end of it. It could take the tax, actually, there's several parcels where it takes the tax down to zero even. Last slide here, in May, the Pennsylvania Department of Education posted the calculated tuition rates for the seventeen, eighteen school year. So for the City of Erie School District, at elementary level was $8,100 annually. For the secondary level is $8,764. I point this out because last year, at the June board meeting, there was a resolution that was passed stating that Collegiate Academy tuition for out-of-district students is going to go up to the secondary rate next year. And so now that we have that posted, we have that information from the Department of Education. We know that all the students that are outside of the City of Erie going to Collegiate Academy will be charged $8,764 in eighth sense.
What about the teachers that teach in Erie when they live in Mill Creek? Do the students go to Collegiate or is it okay?
Yes.
Administrators as well?
Yes. We, the board decided not to renew the policy providing tuition to employees last year.
Thank you.
All right. And that's all that I really have on the budget for us. So any questions about any of that information?
We can go right into your next one.
Okay. So I know we've talked about it several times, a couple of times already, but I do have a sort of a summary of the pricing schedule for you. I think everybody might have this in their packet of information. This one here.
It's under the com doc. Proposal highlights this one here.
Ah, okay, so maybe, so I've really just before it's...
It's inside.
There's a certain page in there, yeah. So basically, the second page in there is the main summary of that.
Third page, sorry.
Third page, sorry. Really, the last three lines on there are going to be the ones that I'm really talking about. So overall, so we have, we got, our best proposal that we got was really from, from com doc. It was what was considered our alternate proposal one. And we're really finalizing details now. Just yesterday, we met, com doc met with our team and all the technicians that work in all the schools to figure out the number of machines need and locations of them and everywhere. So we're finalizing the final numbers now. But we, what we think it is going to look like is that the third row from the bottom is going to show that there's going to be about a $2 million cost to this contract over its five-year lifespan. Right now, if we were to change nothing and continue on printing and everything as we are, we expect that five-year cost to be $2.5 million. So over the course of, over the course of five years, we would save a half a million dollars in there. The print shop manager, if he says, if his printing were to go... So I guess a lot of this cost is developed on how much we print in black and white and how much we print in color. The print shop manager feels that his, his counts would be a little bit different than is cluded on this summary. And if, if the counts happen exactly as he says it would, we're looking at that cost maybe being about more at $780,000 over five years. So I wanted to share the $500,000 amount because I think that's the most conservative amount that we can, that we can more or less bank on, really, getting annually. And this would also include any, any sort of, sort of, I guess, philosophy change in the district, maybe send more jobs that are printed at schools to the print shop as the, the machines that are at the schools cost more per impression than the machines at the print shop do. So the more burden that we could take off the machines at the schools and move to the print shop, would then just, would then benefit that bottom line even more. So I think, to present it out to you, I think the absolute minimum we could see is the $500,000 savings over five years. More to come if we print properly or even send more things, just kind of a change of philosophy a little bit, district.
Is there a way that you can not limit, but almost limit the schools with the number of discrepancies proven here? There's a count, a count of machines, so is there, do you kind of force that to the print shop?
That's, I think that's something that we'll be looking at down the road. At this point now, with the, where each individual is going to have to use a code to log into the machine. So this year, I think it's going to be a baseline for us to start tracking who's doing what so that we can start moving in that direction.
And you're also limiting the number of printers in the schools?
Yes, yes.
So that's going to, so when the teachers get mad, they call you?
Yes, exactly. That's how I... So, I mean, the good thing about it is how it was, how it will be set up is that if somebody were to, at a school or even be in this building here, if I were to print a document, I would send it to a centralized print server. Then I could go, I'm sorry, that's my phone making noise when I'm going to do something. I have to release payroll tonight. Sorry? All right, my bad. So basically, what would happen is that we would print to a centralized server and then you could go to any machine within the district and really print that out. So there will be a limited number of machines, but say, the machine that you normally go to, maybe somebody's there or they're doing some job. You can walk down the hall or go to a different floor and find another machine and still get your job out of that. So there is going to be a little more flexibility in that regard.
And so then we'll, we'll have to, just as we go, if we find that we need more printers in this area or that area?
So we have, so we both have two provisions in the contract that if we can add at the contract rates, so that we come in at the rates that we've already negotiated at. Or two, we do have certain points in time within it, within the RFP response, that they were agreed to that as we look at the counts of certain machines, maybe we adjust, you know, swap machines out. So maybe this certain machine is getting a heavy load because of where it is and another machine is not. So we could switch it to reduce the load on that or we could just reconfigure and put them in a different location to make certain ones that are underutilized more accessible even. So there are many options to configure things around to get it to work.
Will this at all affect what our agreement is with the EEA as far as their ability to print? Something we've looked at, what the contract says as far as?
I was not aware there was anything in the contract about printers.
That's what I said, we'll see.
There used to be, but I have not seen the new contract. So I retired before your new contract, so I'm not sure.
That's a good point. We'll take a look at that and make sure we're in compliance.
It's in there, is that they have to have access to, to a copy or so.
I wondered where you were.
So yes, and I guess if it is solely access, we will look into and verify that and everything. But everybody will have access.
I was like, because you said...
You're seeing, and they're all like...
We'll have to define access at that point.
Yeah. Could be some issues there, just saying.
Just don't lock the door.
Yeah, so that's the one thing with, with the technicians that really work in all the schools, we're locating areas that are open at all times and every, and all the teachers will have access to it when they need it. So really kept the technology people who are in charge of those schools really a good part of making those decisions and those best strategic locations for them in the building.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to note that the contract as well is waiting on some of the information that Mr. Myra's indicated that they're finalizing at this point. We hope to have that added to the resolution.
Next week.
Late this week. Yes, sir. So if you look at the draft now online, it does not have the actual contract attached to it. We're aware of that and we're, we're going to finalize that.
Okay. Transportation.
So we've had a wild couple of weeks here with transportation, trying to figure out what, what we can or can't do with the potential for EMTA not providing us trip or service next school year. I had hoped tonight that I would have a better sense on how many drivers and runs we would need for the upcoming school year. But it seems like every piece of data we pool on, on the students and where they're attending raises three or four additional questions. Randy and I were looking at this right up until five o'clock tonight. However, we do, I think tonight, have a pretty solid plan for you that will allow us to, give us a little more time and give us an opportunity to find out exactly what's going to happen with the EMTA. So when we first were notified by EMTA that we were, we, this may happen, what we did is put an addendum to the four bus bid to add up to an additional 30 buses. And those, those bids did come back. And Randy, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, the, the additional buses that we requested, the addendum, we got prices from two out of the three original bidders. The issue was that none of those companies could get us a bus this summer. We're basically 90 to 120 days out when they send them, send the order to the manufacturer and they finally get it to us. Upon learning that information, I reached out to all of the companies that put in a bid for the original four and said, what do you have on the lot? Whether it's gas powered, diesel powered, propane powered, what do you have on the lot? Can you give me just some general pricing? And based on that information, at least as of today, they all seem to have some buses on the lot. Is it going to be the exact number we need? We're not sure, but, you know, all, all companies are willing to work with us, obviously, it's such a large, large purchase. So as part of that plan, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be sending out another bid that's going to be going out tomorrow. And we're going to keep the language a little bit more open so that we can make changes if need be. But we'll be requesting buses that are either powered by gas, diesel, or propane, up to a certain number of buses, whatever we need. And what, what our hope is that we will get a response and we'll be looking for a delivery date by August 17th, which still then gives us a whole nother week of just prepping the buses, getting them ready, getting our drivers used to them before school starts a week later. And what we're looking at is having those bids back to us by June 27th, I believe, is.
So just, just kind of rephrase that a little bit. I mean, when we did the addendum, our bid specifications were such that the buses that the current bidders have on the lot did not meet those specifications. So in order to give us an opportunity to purchase the buses that they do have available, instead of waiting 90 days for them to build us a bus that meets those exact specifications, we want to loosen that up a bit. And in addition, not, not one vendor has a total of 20 to 30 buses available to us right now. So we want to modify the bid document to allow us to go to the lowest bid, meeting the specs for as many buses as they can take and then move to the next one until we have enough buses to fill, fill out our complement for the upcoming school year. And with the, with the, looking at the 27th as far as a bid opening, that's really good timing. I did speak to the director of EMTA yesterday and their auditors will be on site the first week and, or last week in June. And that's the first thing he's going to bring up with them. So at that point, we should know for certain whether or not they're going to be able to provide us this service for, for next year or if they're going to give us a little time to, to bring it back in-house. So that's where we're at. I'm still feeling that we're probably somewhere between 20 and 30 buses from you say, Randy?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
For Teresa, so how challenging will it be to hire the bus drivers to fill all those buses?
We do, we actually, we train some of our employees during the school year. So we do have people with their CDL waiting to move through the system. So we do have a pool of some people. We tend to get 10 to 15 applicants every time that we do advertise. So we should be able to get a pretty good pool.
And EMTA does anticipate laying off some of their drivers if this does happen. So they, so they'd be willing to cooperate and, you know, should also be able to offer them positions.
Mr. President, is our wage, is our wage competitive with other wages on the outside so that we can draw more people towards us? Is that...
Yes.
That, that's one thing we've kind of tag-teamed, Brian and myself, Mark Longstreet have been looking at it as far as determining that. The other part of this is the Erie School District has never had routing software. And Dave was kind enough to reach out to all the business managers in the county. There is a handful, and again, it's a small handful in Erie County that actually use routing software. And I have phone calls scheduled with two of the, two of the ones that seem to serve as Erie County. Those are scheduled for tomorrow.
Thank you. My brother is a transportation director for a school district in Pennsylvania, so I could also utilize him.
Let's talk. Yeah, let's talk.
Yeah, we could. The only thing about routing software is it's like the GPS. I mean, they could, you know, send you off on the street if you couldn't go. So I mean, I mean, it always was, and now we're going too many years back, but the bus drivers themselves made up, you know, they, they made up the routes and drove the routes and...
Yeah, and as I understand it, the, the school district at one point at least either had some sort of routing software or tried some routing software. You guys might know better, and there was a lot of issues at that time where it was trying to lead them through the cemetery.
Right.
Rose, that didn't exist.
Yeah, I remember us doing our own routes all the time.
Yeah, we did our, you know, because you have to kind of drive, I mean, to do the route, you have to drive through it, know what way, you know, which way you're going to go, where the traffic lies. And then the other, the other variable that's involved is you can set up your route any way you want, but until you drive that first morning during the school year, that's a different traffic pattern. So, it can change, you can make up your, you know, you can do as well as you want, but it can end up a whole different deal.
We, we came to the conclusion that this afternoon that I think we're a different animal here compared to some of the county schools, too. If you take a look at the total number of students that we transport, about fourteen hundred are our own kids, and there's about twenty-two hundred that are going to Propia or Charter. So, and they're going to twenty different schools across the city and county, so trying to pool all that together is...
Yeah, and these routes are not, these routes are not house to house, so I mean, they're just, they're stops. So once, once we determine where the kids are, you tell them where the stop is, it, it shouldn't be as difficult as, as, you know, I think it should be, it's a small town, you know. It's difficult, I understand, so...
It's difficult. I guess I have just one more question. When you talk about the specifications, are we, are we potentially not getting the best buses possible for our students, or what are the best, the differences in specifications?
You know, we, the original request was just specifications that, that met, met the state requirements. We even had them bid on the seatbelt-ready seats as an adder because of the recent news out of the Federal Department of Transportation. So, you know, some of it was, one of the, or one of the buses came back, it had a, had a white roof on it compared to a yellow roof that was supposed to reflect the sun differently. So it's just things like that. It's, one had cruise control versus another bus that didn't. So it's, it's items like that that are coming up with a little bit of different pricing. There's not a lot of need for a cruise control on a bus for us.
Okay, so basically, we're following all the guidelines.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And these buses still have to be inspected by, by the state and, you know, make, make sure that they fit those requirements, absolutely.
And our mechanics do have some preferences, but Randy is going to check with them tomorrow on the non-negotiables as far as what they want to see in the engines and those type of things, to make sure that we at least cover those type of things.
And, and two of the three businesses or companies that responded to the bid are Pennsylvania companies, so they are aware of it. And all three have dealt with the district for, what I've been told, at least forty years.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Plato, is there a timing issue on what you want to award?
We would...
Oh, that is a good question.
Yes. If we, if we need to do this, we would need to have a special meeting the week of the twenty-seventh. So again, at this point, if we have the bid opening of that week and we know whether or not EMTA is able to do it, if EMTA is able to give us another year, I would recommend that we, we do that instead of trying to rush this. That'll give us more time and give us more options to pool all this together. So if, if that's the case, then we won't need a special meeting the last week in June, but if, if we do need to bring this back in-house this summer, then we'll have to hold a, a new meeting to do this, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Right on to the architects.
All right, so at your place tonight, I do have an architect fee summary. If you recall, we did put a, put together a committee to review the architect proposals. It had Mr. Petunga, Mr. Spiegel, Mr. Zogby, Mr. Seibert...
Mr. Casillo was there.
Mr. Casillo was unable to attend.
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Prusnicki and Mr. Mira. So we, we, looking at the, the four proposals, we decided to interview three of the four. The, the fourth one, Weber Murphy Fox, did not come in and meet with us prior to submitting a proposal, and we felt they didn't really have a clear understanding of what we were looking to do here with this facilities plan and moving forward with our, our buildings. So we did interview all three of those, those organizations, and we, I think unanimously decided that HHSDR had the best approach. Eric, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about the process there?
Sure, so we, we went through the full list of the interested parties, and as Mr. Plato pointed out, Weber Murphy Fox never came in and spoke with us in advance to the bid that they submitted. In either regard, the other companies all came in and spent some time with us, and we discussed the specifics because the, the bid proposal that we sent out, the RFP, had some level of ambiguity in it because of the complexity of the assignment that we're looking for. Just as a brief overview, we're looking at two parts of this. The first part would be for them to help us in coming up with a facilities plan that would allow us to, or help us to use the amount of money that's available to improve the, the schools, starting in a priority order, so that we would know that those schools that require certain things would be done certainly first, and would allow us to use the remaining amount of money available to spend it on projects that we saw as most valuableist collectively. In either regard, after meeting with the groups and listening to them and submitting them a list of questions, which they gave us written response to as well as some verbal response during the meeting, the group, as Mr. Plato pointed out, seemed collectively to agree that HHSDR Architects was the one that we felt would be most suitable for it. And, you know, the reasoning behind that, you know, generally would be the level of professionalism that they submitted. And in addition, they seem to have a lot of experience in providing similar proposals to other school districts who had similar needs as to ours. In either regard, as a follow-up to that, I reached out to HHSDR and asked for a list of references of other school districts in Pennsylvania that they've worked with on similar projects, just to get some feedback as to what their experience was. So I had, I had four individuals respond to me, and I gave Mr. Plato a list of three so far, but one came in very late, and this was primarily superintendent to schools. Almost all of them had a feasibility type of study or a study that would do similar work to what we're looking for, and all of them came back positive. Generally, they all came back and said that the HHSDR group was professional, they're prompt in their response, they were good at working with the board of directors, they gave valuable information. In addition, one of the groups, and this would have been Greenville School District, they actually have a project going on that was a result of this study, and their reference was probably the best of any of them. They, they felt very strongly that they had picked the right group to work with their school district, that they had no hesitation in, in recommending them to us as well. Just to add a little bit to it, we also looked at things that you might find valuable, and we certainly did as a committee, things like change orders and their budget estimates, which are going to be critical for us. We have some problems that are very complex, and there is no silver bullet solution, or we wouldn't need someone to tell us how we might accomplish that in the best way or give us an estimate of what it's going to cost. And, and their budget estimates were very good, and the number of change orders were very low. I, I think that based upon some of the responses, this organization that recognized themselves as being the representatives of the owner, in this case, a school district, in defending the needs of the school district and making sure that the value was there and the money that was spent, and that the school in the end was made better and certainly safe and environmentally friendly for our instructors and our students. There has been a request for additional elevator capacity at Erie High.
Well, the elevator doesn't work at Erie High, from what I understand.
Actually, it was repaired today. Today was the day that got repaired. We are waiting on, on having a, an inspection by the state, Labor and Industry, to make sure that the work that was done in state...
Well, because some of the teachers were moving around their classes, and they weren't able to use the elevator, so...
Yeah, that was quite a disappointment, the, the amount of time it took to repair that elevator. So, we did give a lot of effort towards motivating the individuals who were responsible for that repair. And I guess to give some good news, they covered under the service contract, and it was a very expensive repair. All the ropes needed to be replaced on the elevator.
So if everybody's comfortable, we'd like to move ahead and put HHSDR on the agenda for, for next Wednesday to, to appoint them so they can get moving on the facility study. We're hoping to have that done by the fall so we can get started on the planning and not miss another summer construction season.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, strategic plan.
Just real quickly, I wanted to point out, I, I received the final draft of the strategic plan today. We're looking forward to getting that on the agenda next week, and I don't have anything further to say on that.
Okay. Move on to financial training.
So we, thanks to Mr. Zogby, we were able to retain PFM. We have Marissa Littman coming in, and we'll send out an invite for next Monday from five to seven o'clock to do the, the first board training. It's, as the board requested, very Erie School District specific, really focusing on our finances and the, the projections, so I think it's going to be a very valuable assessment that we'll be able to get our first look at where our five-year projections are.
Awesome. Monday.
Next Monday, another Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody got anything on new business?
Real quick, just Senate Bill ten ninety-five, the Education Committee approved it today, and this, this, or ten ninety-five, this bill would change the requirements for graduation. So it's important that we reach out to Senator Loughlin and let him know that we support this legislation because our, our students will be juniors this year, coming year, in 2020, they're going to have to pass this to Keystone to graduate. So this gives them different ways or different graduation options, so I don't know who has that personal relationship with our senator.
Senate Bill ten ninety-five?
Ten ninety-five.
Got it.
I think I know who does, but we'll work on it.
The other thing, real quickly, is, and I'll send this to you, is there an article, Philadelphia School District is now entering into some kind of agreement with their charter schools, and now I can't get the, can't get it to come out, but new accountability rules for charter schools, and as we're moving forward, looking at our charter school bill, I thought it might be something we wanted to look into as well. So I'll send you that next.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else before we take a recess and go to executive?
Mr. Petunga, I have one quick item for Mr. Hartman, the Policy Committee, and the rest of the board. Mr. Prusnicki realized and brought it to our attention that the school district has to adopt a federal procurement policy in order to be in compliance with federal regulations for the Uniform Grants Guidance. We checked with PSBA as to which policy that would be, and they informed us that it's policy six-two-six. We've placed six-two-six on the agenda, and we will be in a position at the Committee of the Whole next week to give you a little more detail as to what that is, and we'll make sure we get it out to the Policy Committee before that, if that's okay. It needs to be adopted by June thirty.
Thank you.
So we're meeting the day after the regular meeting, maybe, so what are we going to do about it the night before? Are we going to just hear about it, or are we going to announce at a specific point?
I believe on six-two-six, for the meeting on the thirteenth, we'll be providing information on that particular policy.
The twentieth?
If, on the, on the twentieth, and if the board believes it's to be appropriate, we'll ask that it be voted on at that night.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll take a German for about ten minutes and meet executive session in room three. Please.